Motion for open session?
Open, uh, motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Zabrowski, Board of Education, re-enter into open session at 6:54 PM. For focus on the meeting. Sorry everybody, we're running a little behind the executive session, next three patients. But this time, join us in the monthly student recognition. Dr. Raff. Thank you everyone for your patience. In keeping with the social emotional mission here, we're gonna focus once again on trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring and citizenship are four character education attributes, components. And I will start the presentation now, because I know we're running behind and, uh, we'll start with kindergarten. I'd like to welcome Ms. Callie O'Neil as our November kindergarten student of the month. And according to Ms. Parable, Callie is the definition of a phenomenal citizen. I love the word phenomenal. Uh, Callie's filled with kindness for all. She is always making certain that everyone has what they need. They're always wearing a smile and the classroom is in order. She's respectful and a terrific role model to others. She's a person that will not give up until she conquers. She puts tremendous effort into everything she tackles and strives to do her personal best. Callie is such a pleasure to have in kindergarten. So congratulations to Callie, we'll get that to her tomorrow. Moving up, uh, across to first grade, and this is a young lady who's been up here before, and that is Ms. Alexandria Boerly. Alex, come on up, I know you're here. She's been down this road before, come on over here. Alex demonstrates the six pillars of character. You can't hide, you can't wear a vest like that. Uh, she demonstrates the six pillars of character every day in first grade. According to Ms. Phillips, she enters the classroom, she's ready for everything, she loves to learn and she's a friend to all. She's a great feeder eater and a pleasure to have in class. And that smile greets you every morning, so don't ever stop doing that. Congratulations to Alex. Uh, we're moving over to second grade, and that is, uh, one of our new students this year, very excited, Chase Ariger. Is Chase here tonight? Chase is not here, I'm gonna give him his due anyway. Chase joined the school this year, brought nothing but positivity, respect and a smile on his face. Ms. Parble says he's a role model for others, reminding them what it is to be a respectful student. We're lucky to have welcomed Chase to Ocean Gate this year. Way to go Chase. Moving over to third grade, I'd like to bring up Patrick Chadwick. Come on over here, Captain America. Ms. Hebrew, Patrick Scott, excuse me. Uh, Ms. Hebrew describes Patrick as his little helper, or as her little helper. He's always asking if anyone needs help, always willing to help in any way. So polite, friendly and just a pleasure to have in class. She's proud to have him and is glad he's the student of the month for November for third grade. Great job Patrick. Is Lillian Wardell here? Not here tonight? Uh, Lillian's an example of what it means to be an outstanding member of our school community. She consistently demonstrates, uh, respect towards her peers and teachers, always speaking kindly, she's got a friendly, positive attitude, always looking to help others, whether it's assisting a classmate who needs support or lending a helping hand in the classroom. Ms. McQ is proud of Lillian for her commitment to kindness and citizenship. So congratulations to Lillian. All right, we are moving over to fifth grade, it's double Ariger night, so I'm sorry that they're not here. Declan Ariger is joining, um, is joining the ranks of student of the month. Uh, since joining the district, this year, uh, he's been an absolute joy to have in class, according to Ms. Schuzick. Consistently demonstrates the six pillars of character. He fills the classroom with positivity, enthusiasm and a great sense of humor. His excitement for learning truly shines when he brought in a skeleton wrapped like a mummy after Art of Us sent lesson on mummification. Gives, gave us all a great laugh. He smiles all the time, he's always willing to help out, such a pleasure working with him. Congratulations to Declan. I got one more, and this gentleman's been up here before as well, and that is now, uh, moving to sixth grade, I'd like to bring back up Mr. Garrett Rice. Garrett is this blessed student of the month, because he's shown tremendous growth and continues to put in effort even when he feels challenged or frustrated. Doesn't give up easily, he pushes himself to keep going, which has made a big difference in his progress. Garrett is also, Garrett is also kind and patient, classmate, he treats others with respect and he's a dependable friend. His perseverance and care, uh, show make him deserve of this recognition. And Garrett always has his flags ready for flag football. He gets angry with me when I tell him we're not going out for recess because it's too windy. So thank you for that Garrett, great job. And, uh, if we could bring them all up here, uh, for a quick picture, Mr. McQ? Board members, especially parents of any board members? Go ahead guys, you can stand around, but, uh... All right. All right, great job everybody. And, uh, Mr. Casey, if you'll indulge me, sir, I have one more word that I'd like to give out tonight, and, uh, this evening, I have the privilege of recognizing one of our outstanding fifth graders who demonstrated exceptional achievement on this past spring's NJSLA mathematics assessment. Besides the fact that he's a Kansas City Chiefs fan, he is a pretty amazing young man. Brody Goddardson earned a perfect score on the state math test. An accom- please, give it up for Brody. This is an accomplishment that reflects not only his strong math calculus skill, but his dedication, focus and hard work throughout the year. Brody, your achievement shows what's possible when talent meets effort. You've set a wonderful example for your classmates and the rest of the school. We're incredibly proud of you, congratulations buddy. Board member who wants to stand up and share this moment, or you can all get up, that's awesome. Let's get another round for all the students, uh, you guys did a great job, congratulations. So we're gonna continue the meeting, we're gonna open with public comments, but if parents, uh, wanna get their kids home and more than welcome to stay for the rest of the public session tonight, but if you wanna, we'll take five minutes so you guys can kinda sneak out of here, if you wanna sneak out or if you wanna stay, we'll continue on. Okay, all right, we're all set. All right, public comment. During the board meeting, the OCGA School District Board of Education offered members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the OCGA School District. The board reminds those individuals to take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and OCGA address and link their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operations of the school district. Questions raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and are responsibly forthcoming on appropriate. The board asks that members be publicly courteous and mindful of the rights of the individual in speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specifically the rights of the board in them by laws and security. Is there any public comment this time?
Melanie Curtis, my fellow Ms. Jelena. Her first question. I see we end the vote on January 27th, will there be an after two hours available?
Yes, there will be, all the normal voting procedures, uh, that you would have, say in November, would be available for you. Yes. We'll have information about that. Um, I think there's, uh, there might be a mailing that comes out, I'll find out more. Right.
Any other public comment?
Hello? Uh, Alicia Capuano, 524 East One, Port, Alabama. Uh, I have a question, um, about the water filtration and reusable water, um, in the school. Uh, it's been brought to my attention that the kids are not using them because of an extreme metallic taste. Uh, the water doesn't taste the same as it used to, is what's being reported. I don't know when the filters were last changed, um, when, or they were last checked. Does anybody know that information?
Just trying to say, we, we, we have a regular cycle of water testing, like that, right?
Yeah, a few years ago, the state implemented, uh, requirements for water testing. I'm not aware of anything in recent, uh, recent months, uh, but I can, uh, could investigate that, get it back here.
This has been something that's, uh, transpired since the school year started. So there is a problem, because the water's tasting different to the children. I asked multiple children about it and they're all saying the same thing. And they're not reusing, refilling their usable water bottles throughout the day because of the taste of the water. So then, then it's for a meeting, if we could get that, um, answered, that would be great. Um, as far as for tonight, so far, I tell them, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work, I appreciate your dedication to the school and to our town.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Ms. President Anna, Ocean Gate, I have a question. Um, did we receive anything on the feasibility study? Because I see we're already looking at a vote.
We, we received a draft copy and this steering committee with all the implicated districts are going to meet in the near future to go over some of the preliminary findings. So nothing is, there's still some work to be done on that front, but we did receive a draft copy.
And is that something that the public will be impacted? I was under the impression from the last meeting, that once the feasibility study came in, there would be a meeting here for the, you know, the town?
Yes.
I was just curious, is this a question we're hearing?
So we just got that in a week ago, maybe not even, um, a couple days ago rather. The draft copy and the processes and the way the grants set up, is the draft copy comes out, steering committee has all the individual towns or individual parties that have given any study gets together, takes a look at the good findings, maybe some findings need to be researched a little bit better, maybe some findings need to be tweaked a little bit, and a final copy comes out, and when the final copy comes out, then it's a public period. So if you're addressing a process like that, watch on Hill's Board of Education up in North Jersey, they completed their study and they had a public presentation, so that's on the what it's like, what it's gonna kinda look like, but obviously with different towns and different numbers, but that's the process.
So basically, uh, what you're reading from the study is that there's going to be a vote of that random, that's why they're putting that out before putting the study for the township. That's basically what we're looking for.
I, I really can't, I mean, as far as, really can't, I can't answer that personally, uh, but I'm not sure that we're the way, the way that the study, I can tell you that. There's certain time constraints, constraints as far as budgetary and what the state's looking for, so that's why this item is on the agenda tonight for discussion. So we're gonna discuss it, we'll still hear, we'll hear us talk about it.
Any other public comment?
Lisa, I have a question about what you just said, Rich. So you're saying that the town is gonna vote on the increase of the taxes prior to the meeting regarding the findings of the insanely delayed study because you guys are under budgetary restrictions? So you're expecting the community to vote on something that they don't know nothing about yet?
Um, no, those two are two different things. A referendum vote for the increase in tax levy, that's what's up for discussion on the agenda tonight. There's nothing up for discussion on the feasibility study because the findings are preliminary and needs to go through a process.
But the tax increase for the constituents from the last, whatever, eight months was based upon the study and what we were gonna go do during, go forward, correct?
The hope was to have the study in the time that we were expected, so we have the full picture of what could possibly happen. We're not there yet, so this is why, this is why this item's up for discussion tonight under review.
I just don't see how you can expect people to vote on something when they don't know what the future's gonna hold. So you're asking them for the money without knowing if the school's gonna be open next year?
Well, the resolution tonight is that put to a special election, increase the tax levy, make up for the shortfall in our budget. So it's gonna go out to an election and the town's gonna decide on, if the board decides to go that route tonight, it's gonna go on special election and the town is gonna vote on whether or not the taxpayers in the town are gonna support the school or not.
I mean, I tell you, you're most likely gonna see a failure in the, uh, the vote if you do not release the findings before the vote.
Well, if we don't have the findings to, to release, we can't release an incomplete report.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying logically, they're gonna shut it down because they're basing a vote on no information of the future. I understand it's not your call and I understand that because Rutgers delayed it for nine months, now you guys are under time constraints to be able to submit the budget. I understand that, but what I'm saying to you is-
So the item on the agenda tonight again, and you know, I, I don't wanna back and forth on that, but the item on the agenda for discussion tonight is to raise the tax levy permanently to make up for the shortfall. So if we get this study back in time during that process, we're not gonna give up on the regionalization study, we're gonna keep going that route. Tonight's discussion, what's on the agenda tonight, is a permanent tax levy increase to go out and to the public to vote on.
I'm completely understand what you're saying, and what I am saying to you as a constituent is this, if you're expecting these people to vote yes for this, they're not going to if there is not a final study for the regionalization.
Please, can I add something quickly?
Yes.
A problem with this is because we were relieved so much, hope was to have this for your 26 and 27 school year, even says that we acted, even signed that regionalization was the best way, it's approved, that does not affect 26, 27, 28, so we still had a budget shortfall for 26, 27. That's what the, so the purpose of the study is approved by us, by central, by everyone that we are going to try and regionalize. That would not take place until 27, 28 because of the delay.
Then why is it a permanent increase? Why isn't it just a one-year increase? He just said it was a permanent increase.
It's a permanent increase, you raised the tax levy, you know, if you do regionalize it, that's gonna be taken into consideration and it's gonna be minced out.
If we regionalize, if we regionalize because they knew there would no longer be an Ocean Gate budget for schools and a central, one giant new budget with a new division based on, on the tax levy.
But you're asking for the increase now because you have no money for next year?
Correct.
But then the increase remains and we go into a bigger poticle, not into a small poticle, is what you're saying? Well, what I would say is this, that you're probably not gonna get a yes on this vote and you're then gonna have a very unfortunate circumstance, um, about the absentee ballot as well, you're sixty days out, that's usually when you get an absentee ballot, if I'm correct? And no one has any information, nobody even thought about this. It's the winter time, half the town goes down to Florida. So therefore, you having this vote and not having absentee ballots already in place or thinking about this prior to putting it on a referendum, I think you are coming to this ill-prepared.
Thank, thank you for your comments, okay?
I'll talk to you. I just have one question, kids, this referendum is not approved by the town, what happened?
Kevin?
If the referendum fails, then Dr. Corey and myself will start to meet with the Department of Education officials, uh, and find out what they're, what they wanna do about the fact that we're not gonna have a balanced budget for next school year. And that could range from any number of things, um, you know, it could be a loan, could be any number of things, so, um, I don't, I don't necessarily speculate, it's certainly possible, we explore a send-receive relationship with another town as well. And that's, I believe that's in the question, uh, the explanatory statement of the question that's on the agenda.
Yes, please, please.
Question, question, I have an, um, I just want a question, I should be saying that. I'm not saying I'm for or against, what I'm saying is basically, we're being asked as a town, put a ban date on a giant thing, so we know that that's not really gonna solve the problem. If at this referendum, the vote comes down to no, would the state mandate that we discuss with other, or would it just say, we're sorry, as a state, we can't allow this, there is no 26, 25, uh, 26, 27 school year at the OCGA, basically? What we really need to find out, is that exactly, was it a study, I understand the feasibility study was delayed for whatever reason, it shouldn't be the town's responsibility to have to worry about fixing something that the state couldn't do. We know the state has really put a lid on us for eight years, it's been going on, not overnight, we go back, it's been eight years, and how can the town be expected to fix it in such a short term? But if the referendum fails, would the state or would the school say, there is no 26, 27 school year?
Anyway, I, based on what, what went on last year, when we had some trouble putting the budget together, um, the state was pushing us in the direction of setting up a send-receive relationship. So I would suspect they would do the same this year.
But they've done pretty much in all the towns, you know, putting that into place?
Yeah, uh, the most recent, um, I was talking with some colleagues recently, Bass River School, um, closed a few years ago, they ended up sending their, their students to Little Lake Harbor School. So I, I do think that's probably the most, that's the closest geographically to what we've been over to. Um, and so yeah, the state, we've been talking with, uh, some of the players that were involved there, um, the state was not very helpful, they, it helped close the school, it helped to do, they just, they, all they cared about was getting a balanced budget, they didn't really care how.
Mr. Shay, Towns River, what did they do in Towns River?
So last year with Towns River, they increased their taxes, I think it was thirteen percent or something like that. So they-
That was, that was the decision of the state. The state did that, right?
Yes, the state.
The state did it?
Yes, the state did it, yep.
State, the state, they went before. They went before that. You have a couple comments?
Just curious of the example we discussed Shay and the send-receive relationship, do you happen to know, uh, how that affected like the taxes of what they were? Uh, to go into the send-receive, was there, uh, the tax savings or some reason?
I, I would imagine there was savings, um, I don't, I don't know the exact, I, I didn't get the data from it, but I would imagine there was savings, that would be my guess, because otherwise they wouldn't, it was gonna cost them more money than they would have kept, you know, kept the school.
And do they like, uh, is the board involved in, uh, you mentioned exploring that, so is, is they're involved at that point or because, uh, you know, say a referendum was presented and failed, is it now in their hands and they, you know, they kind of determine what the situation is or is there involvement still?
Still a board. Yeah, they, they became a non-operating board event, so they still exist, the board event still exists, they pay bills, you know, each one.
But would they be involved in, okay, let's now explore what send-receive relationships are out there, oh wait, this, this might be critical, is it, like, hey, that's, that's now falls out of our court?
Yeah, uh, we could, we could certainly, you know, if the vote were, if there was a defeated vote, then yes, we could, we would start to reach out to neighboring towns for discussions, yes.
Okay, any other public comment? Thank you. Motion through a minute? Second, and especially, all in favor? Aye. Correspondents?
Yes, I, yeah, I do have a, a couple of things that I've pulled over fairly quickly. Um, Ms. Parable, Ms.
Mrs. Parable, Ms. Kelly, on behalf of kindergarten class, just wanted to thank Board of Education for a wonderful field trip to Atlantic Farms in Menasquon. Students were excited about the adventure and as they drove out to Ocean Gate, you know, it was the best day ever. They just have a formal letter for you guys, which I'll, I'll, Mr. O'Shea, distribute to you. Second correspondence is I would like to invite all the families and the community on behalf of the Ocean Gate School, the PTO, the Platy, the special, I think this is a tradition event, on Thursday, December eleventh, dinner with Santa, five to eight p.m., there are two seedings, five p.m. is six thirty, and I know Mr. Scarpella is working with Mrs. Parable to make sure that we have an ambitious menu for everybody, and of course, the big guest will be that himself, so on behalf of Ocean Gate School, the PTO, please come on in. And then my final correspondence was from the district executive of Boy Scouts of America and you would just like permissions, I hope you guys are okay with him putting out some information regarding the Boy Scouts of America, so if we have any children interested in joining the Boy Scouts, would be available upfront with Mrs. Parle. Those are my correspondents.
Thank you. And is your motion for report and recommendation to superintendent? Second, first and second, Corbett?
Yep, just want to put officially on record, for October fifteenth through November eighteenth, no hits occurred. And second would be our drills for the month, our fire drill, and of course, our safety drill, our lockdown. Those are the only reports. The other thing I do want to make a note of right now, for Mr. O'Shea, under thirteen personnel, I am D, I think it's brought to my attention, and Dr. Ah, with the tax over the watch, twenty-five ninety-three per day would be great with our budget problem, but unfortunately, twenty-five per hour is more realistic if you get a professional power.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. O'Shea, roll call vote to set your report to recommendation to superintendent. Yes. Mr. Fleming? Yes. Mr. Gottschman?
Yes.
Mr. Vosper?
And Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Mr. O'Shea, do you have anything for the business administrative report tonight? Uh, nope, nothing, I think everything on the agenda is pretty straightforward on my end, and obviously, we've talked about, we've got the number twenty-five on the agenda, so I'll leave that big tonight. Thank you. Okay, motion for number thirteen through twenty-four. Second, your first and a second, discussion. And as for Dr. Corbett, if you'll let the record reflect on number D, thirteen D, that twenty-three ninety-three per hour change, reflect in a minute and as the agenda? Yes.
Good question for you, Dr. T, is there a T anywhere thing?
It's a question.
Is there a T at the, there thing? So-
I'm not, sir, not, we don't think we have, last year, right? It's only been a few years.
Similarly, in Ocean Gate, and they, they, there was no, we can talk about, looking at, standing at, right, and possibly, maybe it's something that's in Ocean Gate, but it's not, okay? So it is definitely motion to choose. One more question.
We do sound weird sometimes. Uh, so the point, I forget, sorry, sorry.
Mr. O'Shea, roll call vote? Thank you. Mr. Casey? Yes. Mr. Fleming? Yes. Mr. Gottschman?
Yes.
Mr. Vosper?
Yes.
And Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Before we discuss that, next item, just to ensure clarity and proper procedure, I'm gonna pass the gap for our vice president, so that we speak on the resolution product of presiding officer as an individual board member. This allows me to fully participate in the discussion and express my position without any confusion regarding the character of the power. I will soon write off, I will soon write him off of position when the board is finishing discussing this issue. Vice President Fleming, your word. Thank you, Mr. Casey. Is there motion for number twenty-five? Second, discussion? Tonight I speak as an individual board member, explaining why I believe the board must postpone this action and impose permanent tax levy increase. First, I want to begin by saying this, I support this school, fully and without hesitation. I support our students, our families, our teachers, and the long fight we have taken up to keep this Ocean Gate school open and thriving. No one can doubt the commitment that this community has shown for us. We invested countless hours, meetings, conversations, and efforts to be saving this school. If in the end, a permanent tax levy proves to be the only option, and it should be the people's decision, our residents deserve the final say on some of these decisions. I'm not oblivious that we're working within a very short time window, and by no means does that obligate us into a rushed decision tonight that will shape our district for decades. A compressed timeline makes it even more important that we slow down, take a breath, and ensure we have all the facts for moving forward. You heard tonight it is true, we received the draft regionalization study copy, but the financial findings were definitely not comprehensive and did not meet the level of detail that we had promised. I have already made a formal request to have a more complete analysis, because without it, we don't have a full and accurate understanding of our long-term options. As a part of this process, the steering committee, as the group representing all businesses involved, has not reconvened the review of findings, addressed gaps, or finalized recommendations. Without that work, there is no finished study, and therefore, there is no responsible basis for making a permanent tax decision tonight. Ocean Gate has already done its part, we used every waiver, pursued shared services, reduced staff, made difficult cuts, we have operated transparently and responsibly, we have done everything within our control except for what is on the table tonight. I believe that we've earned the right to expect the state and our studying partners to do their part before placing a heavier burden on our taxpayer. As we all know, this crisis was created by state-funded formula. We did everything right and we're still penalized by S2. If it is truly threatening for you, Ocean Gate does not need any state aid, it should have been reduced at a more gradual and predictable manner. Expecting us to impose a permanent tax increase on our residents while the state haphazardly gutted funding formula is not only unfair, it undermines public confidence and creates the illusion that how somehow this board has mismanaged our finances. My next point to me is personal. All the unseen advocate advocacy, the countless hours spent speaking on behalf of our constituents, that we cannot afford the heavy-handed cuts, and then tonight, if we pass this resolution, we send the wrong message to Trenton. Raising taxes now tells the state that Ocean Gate can't afford the damage, and that all the time spent telling our story will be wasted. We should make it clear that we cannot survive long-term without fair funding reform or at least some consideration of flexibility while we do our duties. Delaying this vote strengthens our leverage, in my opinion, and keeps pressure where it belongs, and the legislature, the Department of Education, and our regionalization party. We owe it to the public, full transparency. A permanent tax change will never be decided under rushed conditions or incomplete data. If this is ultimately the direction we must go, again, it should be in the people of Ocean Gate who make that decision with every fact and option in front of them. In my opinion, we're not there yet. So for all these reasons, the unfinished study, the short timeline, incomplete financial data, the state's irresponsibility, and our consistent message, and the need for political leverage and obligations to the public, the responsible action tonight is to pause. Therefore, I move to postpone definitely on the main motion, this board to delay any action on a permanent tax levy increase until, first and foremost, the full regionalization study is complete, publicly reviewed, and our community has the full and accurate information needed to make an informed decision about the future of this school. Mr. Casey's made a motion, is there a second? Or she tells? Is there any further discussion on the main motion?
I would just like to say then, I respect Mr. Casey, wherever he does have anything and says, I do not have faith in our state, as you see with some of those other districts, they just don't care, my concern is with the students here, staff here, it's just my opinion, but I don't have much faith in the state, I don't have much faith, you know, in what past practices showed with these other districts, in my main concern is with the students here and staff.
Do you have any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to, etc., is it to rest the back of secondary corner, do we, we are against tightmanship, we're planning on having a decision for next year. I don't want us to risk the place where the staff and students are not known to be in good condition, etc.
To echo that as well, there's, there's a term of business called sunk cost bias. We can do everything for due diligence, do everything the best way that we can, and aim for a certain goal, and the aim of that goal is to be heard by the state, to get the proper funding. We can continue to move towards those ends, but if that is, if we put all of our resources continuing to that goal, and that goal's not being approached, and that goal's not being reached, and at this point, we're in a communication we've had with the state, from my understanding, we're in a analogous situation with Bass River, and with the county temperature, with other districts also putting in fatal flaw budgets, we, I echo what Eric said, there's no faith in the state to intently believe that they're gonna come on our side. Now, with this thing, this proposal, this resolution was put onto this agenda before we had that draft study even back, we do, again, after what Mr. Vosper said, have to move, unfortunately, an expedited rate, because regardless of what the study says, if it says regionalization is the best thing, we should move forward for next year, we still, regardless, in a separate issue, need to vote on budget for next year. We have no, we have no budget next year, there is a fatal flaw, and with all due respect, we can't decide to raise the taxes, what we are going to do is put it to, to ocean. Yeah, so the, from my understanding, Mr. O'Shea, you give those absentee ballots sixty days before the vote, the vote is January twenty-seventh, so those absentee ballots will go out before the vote. Mr. O'Shea, they'll go out next week, those absentee ballots?
I'll, I'll make sure, I'll reach out to the elections folks tomorrow and I'll, I'll find out, yeah.
And again, just regardless of the study, and regardless of the temperatures, because it's not just Ocean Gate participating in the study, there are four other, four other counties, we do need to consider Ocean Gate and what is happening here. Regardless if we move towards regionalization, regardless not, and that's why I was gonna second on it.
I'd just like to say, yeah, it's, it's not an easy decision when all the options are bad. So all the options are bad here, and the, it's like Mr. Gottschman said, you know, not having much faith in what would happen, and some people's questions are always like, well, if this goes out and it fails, what happens? For me, it's always, the biggest downside is that, it's like, we don't know, there's been times where they've come in and done this, there's times they do this, they might do this, but there's, it's such an unknown, so to feel like the children and their education are really, should be first and foremost in our priority list, to say, okay, this option here, where we don't know, could be entirely worse outcome that we're putting ourselves in, is to say that that's the best, as a board member, that's the best decision you can make, I mean, I can't, I can't, in my heart, feel like that that would be the best choice. And really, I think there's been, you know, we had two different meetings to let the people talk and have their voices be heard, so we don't have the power to say, okay, we're increasing the taxes, but I think we do have the responsibility to let the people now vote. It's clear in these, in these meetings that there was voices on both sides, and to, if not even give people that choice to make themselves by vote, I think would be irresponsible.
I'm gonna say one more quick comment, just to echo what you said, and again, it may seem like an expedited decision here, part of the reason, is exactly what you just said, of why I personally think the January decision makes more sense, right now, there is public discussion about this, there is thoughts on both sides, delaying will turn down the fervor, and whatever that decision ends up being, that's up to the town, but it is the timely thing based on the conversations, and I have to be respectful of the voices that I've heard in those meetings and outside of those meetings, as well as a elected or appointed official here. The other small, not small caveat, but the other big concern, not concern, but point with this, we've had outside and inside counsel discuss with us, the biggest question is what you asked earlier, is what happens if the resolution turns down? What if it votes no? And one of the, the caveats to that, and getting any support from the state, and a lot of us, the biggest reason why we're pushing this is because we don't have faith in the state, they, the only way, not the only way, but one of the most likely ways to look more favorably on us is if we as a board have exhausted every single effort possible, and that includes referendums, that is an option available to boards, even if it comes back no, the state will be more, hopefully, again, we all, it always comes back to hopefully what the state can do, passing or passing or putting forward a referendum, pass or not, shows that we have exhausted our efforts, and that hopefully the state would look more favorably even if it comes back no, if it comes back yes, we do use your terminology, put a band-aid on an issue, or we permanently set ourselves up regardless of regionalization in the future. But pass or fail, we don't have a budget for next year, and if it comes back as a no, the state saw that we did everything we possibly could.
I just, sorry, I see that. Well, now, if we can see the resolution, hello. We just, sorry. Uh, we just need to make sure that, uh, the information and everything, um, see that, uh, we are, we're taking this, uh, this, uh. With regards to that, I do have an upside, we have another forty-five page of information. So, not since, you know, I'm saying that people just wanna say that that could be wrong also. Um, but we did think about this in a meeting, we talked about this. A lot, I think, had to go through the board elections, you know. Uh, you know, they, they deal with a lot of this now, from this point on, not that it comes from us. So we're trying to give them timely, uh, enough time to do what they need to do as well. So this, I don't want to tell you the wrong one, or anything, but I just come by and say that now. That could be wrong. I don't know. That is not, we're not the ones yelling at them now. We're trying to give them as much time as possible to do what they need to do on their side.
Mr. Vice President, just one thing I'd like to add to the conversation I have. That's that my piece, everybody, try to look at this. In the meantime, as we go through any process, I'd encourage, I challenge every board member at this table, advocate Ocean Gate not to form a new amendment. That's all I got to say.
And then just, in terms of the sixty day timeframe that you were referring to earlier, that's the timeframe before the operation, has to be sixty days before the election. That sixty days is probably a bit too long. Soon, this forty-five days appears to be a very long time. I think we could, yeah, remember.
A little bit of discussion on the main motion? Mr. O'Shea, no call vote? Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Gottsman?
Yes.
Mr. Vosker?
Yes.
And Mr. Scott?
Yes.
All right, motion passes forward alone. Another question, that would like to Mr. Casey. Your motion for twenty-sixth financial? Question?
Quick question. Is that the two new formularies?
No, uh, these are just the older one.
That's all special.
Yes. The new, the new ones were serviced last year. Uh, we have a couple older ones that haven't been serviced in a few years that.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? O'Shea, no call vote? Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Gottsman?
Yes.
Mr. Vosker?
Yes.
And Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Guys have any other business? Is there a shame?
Nope.
No. You don't have any business, so we got, uh, every year, New Jersey School Board Association has some training down in Atlantic City, and myself and two other board members, uh, are taking some statewide training. Um, you wanna, Mr. Vosker, you wanna talk a little about?
I, uh, can you see my second here? The NJSPA conference. Uh, it's an incredible day. Uh, it's just a great experience for our board members. Um, it's just something, there's a lot of different sessions, uh, but really, the biggest thing for me is always kind of communicating with other board members in other districts, if you want to. See what their districts are known through, whether that's the same or different, and, uh, see if that applies to us, and just, it's a good resource.
Yeah, my head, it, it, again, just to echo what you said, it's very resourceful for board members. There's, uh, some really interesting timed panels, legislative panels and other budgetary panels. Um, and there was, each day, more than one at a time, different, uh, panels talking about budgets and coming in with a big applause in the budget and state funding. Uh, it reassures me that we are not alone in this endeavor and this fight that we just, uh, went and took the referendum and, uh, gave me different perspectives, uh, from larger districts, smaller districts, um, everything involved, and all the moving pieces with those concerns. Um, as far as just general education, uh, those, they have a wide array of, uh, legislative and, uh, financial issues, issues when it comes to curriculum for students, issues when it comes to, um, how to appoint, uh, and do your school supervisor, or school superintendent evaluations, and it was just, it was very inspiring to see that many people across New Jersey willing and wanting to spend their free time, their volunteer hours, uh, to come learn about how to care for the students when they, uh, organize themselves. It was very.
It was, it was definitely, uh, not only is the workshop, you know, educational, it's also, you know, talk to other board members and, and network and advocate, because you do run into legislators, and you do run into some decision makers from the Department of Education, so it's an opportunity, you know, for a small district in my view, like Ocean Gate, to be able to have a voice and have a one-on-one face-to-face with somebody that normally you can't even get on the phone. So I, it definitely benefits for that. And also, here at the School Board Association, and finally, we definitely mandated training. We're mandated by law, we have to obtain certain amounts of credits. You know, every particular year it's different, but they maintain all of those. We're the only elected body that we have to maintain classes in order to keep, uh, up to date on law and things like that. So it's a great experience for all, and I'm glad you guys got the chance to come back and check it out. Okay, new business? Thank you. Okay, new business? The DA handbook and assembly resolutions. In your board packets and, and separate email. But I, I hope you guys had a chance to take a look at the resolutions. The DA is a delegate assembly. New Jersey School Board Association is a membership group and is driven by its members. And every district has a vote on where the direction of the association is going, whether it's for policy or advocacy, um, financing, things like that. There was four resolutions, and I am the voting delegate that attends if the delegation meets this Saturday coming up, and the delegate, so I will be voting on these items. So if you take a look at the resolutions, there was five resolutions. Four of them were adopted by the subcommittee, one of them not accepted for filing, one of them was removed from the agenda, but is going to be voted on from the floor. So there's gonna be a discussion on that. Is there any questions or any way that were all adopted unanimously except number two? And that was for special education funding. The reason why it was removed from the agenda because it was too repetitive language in New Jersey School Board Policy Manual. So how does the board want to vote for Ocean Gate based on these resolutions for the state association? First one was criminal history review. Second one was universal three-branch mails. Second one was STEM.
Mr. Casey, would you explain, uh, these resolutions, obviously, uh, recommendations and, does this mean that those, that these recommendations are made that they should be sort of adopted statewide?
Yeah, they've got the, the state, New Jersey School Board Association maintains the policy manual publicly, you know, just like any public entity, um, it maintains the policy manual just like our local school board, and it drives the advocacy or the belief statements on the state association, and they represent over five hundred and eighty-seven school districts in New Jersey. So it's important to have a roadmap, just like we have a roadmap with our policy manual, on what the state association is advocating for statewide. So the recommendation, when, when a school board processes a school board and they feel like there's an issue affecting education and they can make a change, or help the school board adopt a resolution, submits it to the resolution subcommittee, they analyze it, cross-reference it with the existing policy manuals, and then they come with a recommendation to the subcommittee whether to approve it, amend it, and there's a discussion on what, what, what the items are, if there's any change. It's either accepted as written, accepted as amended, or removed.
Thank you. Number one, I, you can even see the recommendation of the adopted policy, still big to me. You know, I think that the issue was, uh, having a criminal history, disqualifying criminal offenses, and being very language about, you know, shit.
Well, these, these, these policy positions are, I guess, a little more on the vague side because it encapsulates Jersey, very poor state. Jersey's got a lot of different views and opinions, and for a state to properly advocate the right way, it encapsulate entire state, and they gotta kind of be as general as possible, but have the direction on where to go, so the belief statement would be. You know, you say a little vague, and that's why a lot of these resolutions on board debate, like, they wanna put a resolution out there because they got cut financially. And there's a lot of resolutions when SP came out, but there's already language in the policy manual to advocate to care for them. So even though some districts wanna pull out, I think that's specifically their reason. It doesn't apply to the state.
Is that part of the reason why some of the language is like NJSPA, you mean?
Yes, so, so is it deeper than that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Let me follow.
So for resolution number one, are we all ready to confirm and vote?
Yes.
No, you can, okay. Resolution number two?
This is the one that you, you said is gonna be voted on from the floor?
This is gonna be discussed from the floor, it was properly submitted. But it already, they're gonna, they're gonna try to say it again, and we're probably, it's probably, it's gonna be voted on. So I mean, the recommendation from the subcommittee is gonna say, they don't, they don't feel it's too repetitive language, it's already in the existing policy manual, so they don't recommend it, but the person, the district that put it forward has a right to speak from, for, for, for a vote. So which is very repetitive language, it is probably a no vote? Guys, right with that? Resolution number three? Say, recommend and propose resolution, substitute language, and I see that. New Jersey School Board believes a free school run meal program should be offered to all students at the expense of the state or federal government.
My question would be, is there no way to determine state or federal? Because obviously, we offer free to everybody, it tends to be a lot of risks to be prepared for. Most, because obviously, we have a free reduced program.
Well, this is, on statute, this, this, if this item comes up, basically, the policy manual, if this item comes up, it's ranked the legislative advocacy group at School Board Association as a roadmap on how to speak on behalf of the state.
Going, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of that, we already have period of this much. I'm just trying to see that people, when they, we lived during COVID, when everyone was getting flu, I think it was a lot of risks, because yeah, we have to prepare for a large number of people, and they don't need a small number to get it. I, I just, I'm not a huge fan of that, we already have period of this. Just like I'm saying, and not that I don't ever could need, but that's all we have. Period of this.
Do all of us feel the same way on it?
Uh, I, I just want a little clarity, so is it, is that saying that the free school meal program, it, that exists, should be then funded by the state or federal government? Or a free, or a free meal program should exist for every student that's up?
So, so if this item comes up with the belief statement is, New Jersey School Board Association believes that a free school meal program should be offered to all students at the expense of the state or federal government, not at the expense on the local level, like three hundred percent saying, okay. All agree with that? Okay, good. Number four? The belief statement is that New Jersey School Board believes that the Department of Education should dedicate equitable amount of time, instructional time to science, educational element in elementary and middle schools relative to the amount of instruction time allocated in other subject areas. And there was definitely concern statewide that STEM wasn't being covered as much as some of the other subjects, and maybe some of the other subjects that should be covered as much. Um, so that, that was called out by one of the issues that was experiencing that issue at the local level, and, and the subcommittee agreed that that's a good position to take, that more STEM is probably better than less STEM?
Well, is that, is that the belief? I mean, we don't really decide on issues frequently.
No, 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 it's, if, if it comes up in the state, you know, state can advocate, if, if this education, the Senate Education Committee decides to talk about STEM and Department of Ed, when they start to talk about, start doing things like that, this, this School Board Association actually believe that should have more equitable into the STEM program. Okay, all right. That's all I got for that, so. Sorry, that was a little bit of an exercise there. Public comment? Is there a public comment at this time?
Hello, Alisa, five twenty-four, Eastland Court Avenue. Um, I have a question on the HVAC Hutchinsons, I believe, in Keyport, correct? Is who are having the boiler work done by?
Yes.
Right? I'm, I'm just curious, um, we, Kettles is in town here, HVAC, MyGuy as well. Why are we getting serviced by a company from Keyport?
They're on a co-op, meaning that their services have already been bid out, and, uh, you know, they're used by many schools throughout Palm Beach Ocean County. Um, I've used it at Sesquicote Home, for example, and, uh, so we, you know, they have a good reputation from my deal with them in the past, so.
Doesn't MyGuy donate, don't they sponsor Central as well?
Um, I believe they do.
Yeah? So why wouldn't you use somebody that's in your community, your district, and also donates to your school?
They, we can certainly look, reach out to them. Uh, it does have to be prevailing wage, um, and so again, the company that we secure is already gone through a bid process, they have, uh, all the certificates that you need and, you know.
I mean, I think if you have an HVAC company in New Jersey, you would, you would have the same certificates. I don't think, you know, I, I, I just was curious, when I saw, why are we using an HVAC company from Keyport where we have a multitude that donate to our district?
They're part of a co-op, they might have, have a family, uh, staff, and also union. I'm not sure where they have.
It's a union HVAC company?
They, as far as, uh, we, we don't grow up. When it comes to state, the bare wage, if they have certain jobs, government, they have to go by the bare wage. I'm not, I'm not, I can't speak to, but I'm a, like, so, uh.
I'm, I'm just about supporting our local community, and if we're paying five thousand dollars for a boiler, it would only make sense to use somebody from our local that lives in the town. Um, as far as the referendum goes, um, Rich, I believe that you and I are aligned in our thinking. I am disappointed in the other four of you for not supporting him because I believe he is a hundred percent correct in his entire statement. And I think that, um, you should start looking into the center seat. I think you should already kind of be mapping that out before the vote. Um, I do have a question. If you're concerned about the next school year, why are you asking for a definite increase and not just a referendum for the seven hundred thousand dollars to cover next year? That was a question.
Evident, that seven hundred thousand dollars and correct or wrong, that's gonna take care of everything that the state took from us, so. So essentially, the burden that the state put on us got shifted to the local taxpayer. That's what, that's what the board is now gonna ask this town to do, so.
But why not just ask for the 700 divided by the town and the taxes for a one-time tax increase? Why can't you do that? Why make it a forever tax increase?
Kevin, can you explain how that works?
Yeah, so there's a permanent problem in our budget. So if we were to just ask for a one-year increase, then we'd have to ask for that same increase to follow.
But then you could ask for it after the findings are finalized. If you ask for it, say the Band-Aid, right? The Band-Aid, you need a Band-Aid for next year, that's what you said. And then you're looking to, you know, redistrict, right? Regionalization, you're for that. I'm for saving a school. I thought the board was unified in keeping the school open. If you're asking for money for the school to remain open for next year, that's one thing. And then figure out the following year based on the study. That was insanely delayed. And it's very surprising to me that once we got the gentleman's name that was delayed, all of a sudden, two weeks later, you had a left copy, right? Or we're supposed to. Because they got pressured by the constituents. And now you're pressuring the constituents that pressured workers to get it out. Now you're pressuring us to make a rushed decision without the findings. That is unfair. Rich knows it's unfair. I know it's unfair. You're gonna be disappointed because I'm gonna make sure it's shut down. Now, I think that it is definitely, the four of you not backing Rich up, that very much upset me because he is right, because I agree with him. So that means I agree.
So in terms of just to answer a little bit of pressure that we've put on, I've got a contact from the D C A and, you know, for a little help, a little bit of back channeling. D C A, Department of Community Affairs pays Rowan's study. They pay for it. So I wrote a nice little letter and had a nice conversation with that group. And it came along. Missed a lot, the draft needs a lot of work, I'll tell you that. But it came along. It did take a little bit of pressure from quite a few ends.
Well, I'm glad that we got something out of them quicker than what I believe that they wouldn't have produced. I feel as if from what, watching you when you were speaking about it, your facial expressions, you're definitely all not very happy with what came out. It was not what was anticipated, which means that most likely it came out that if redistricting is not feasible financially for us, I'm assuming. Because that's what we did not want. That it would cost more money to redistrict, right? Or re, right? Am I correct about that? Like we were hoping it was gonna save us money.
It showed the savings, but it missed a lot of key details on what a true regionalized district would have. Duplicate services, contracts, you know, say you have a HVAC company on contract or whatever. Five districts, you know, different contracts, you know, with the internet service, the phone services, just five different contracts. Didn't provide the level of detail that we needed. So we asked them to go back. And that's the process that the spirit committee has a right to go back, has a right to draft copy, has a right to go back. So they can reinvestigate and tweak and get what we want out of this study. Because I think this is what we ordered and we, we got something, but we didn't get it all yet. That's a draft.
Well, as a writer, Rich, you never trust your first draft. You always rewrite, rewrite, rewrite. So yes, should we say we felt this and this and this wrong with it? We would like you to do further look into it. I don't disagree with that. You know, what I do disagree with is this board putting a referendum up before it is finalized and asking the constituents for an increase in our taxes, a forever increase. You did not even approach the referendum with two different choices. A one-time tax increase or a forever tax increase. You would have had better luck if you just asked for the money to save the school next year. Nobody's gonna vote for a forever tax increase with no information about what the school is going to do forward. I have one more question, Courtney Rich. At the end there, you said that you would, some of the board would advocate further than just at the meetings. Could you elaborate on that? Do you feel as if some board members are not doing things?
All of saying I could speak on my behalf, I spent countless hours screaming about this problem for years.
I've been listening. Well, thank you for your work and Rich, you have my full support in what you said.
Jennifer Smith, 61, think you've spoken up. I wasn't gonna speak and then I was and then I decided again. I would like to say that everybody has an opinion. Everybody has the right to vote the way that they want to. The four of you voted the way you wanted to, Rich voted the way he wanted to. Everybody has an opinion. My favorite opinion is the kids. The kids will suffer if this school closes, if it goes away. This school is the best. There's a lot of kids here that will suffer if they go to a bigger school. I hope when everybody goes out and votes, yes, there will be a tax increase. But you have to remember, we have not raised our taxes in a long time. If we've raised our taxes the way we're supposed to, we wouldn't be in this mess. And that's what I believe, after living here for 25 years. So I believe that everybody should go out there and think. And everybody does have a right to vote the way they want and the way they feel. And it's everybody's opinion and it's your choice. But please think of the kids. Thank you.
Rich, may I address the chair?
Let me just address that real fast.
Yep.
Thank you so much for speaking on that. And as people, everybody has their own opinion on what they wanna do. Whether, and I think I made it very clear, over the years, we've been sitting in this chair and being honored to serve this school district. And if anyone calls them a question that I don't wanna save the school, I would think they're completely false. I just hope that there's more voices out there fighting for this special thing that we have louder, more often. I think that's what we need while we go through this process, whatever the process is, whatever the outcome of the referendum vote is, whatever the outcome of the feasibility study, whether it's regionalized, unregionalized, we send receive, I mean, everything's gotta be based upon children. So I appreciate you refocusing on the children. Thank you for that comment.
Sorry. I just wanted to, not specifically to that last comment before. Where, I can't speak obviously to the other three board members who voted in my direction. You can just speak to the direction and the thought process behind mine. I think the opponents of a referendum have done a very strategic job of conflating two things at once. The school funding for next year and subsequent years and then the potential for regionalizing. I earnestly believe those are two issues completely separate and they've gotten conflated. And people are letting the results of one impact the other. What we are putting to referendum is a plan. You said that you are, we are expecting people to vote for something with no plan for the future. This referendum is a permanent fix to the school. It is a permanent adjustment to keep the school open forever. That is what, that is the plan. Now, if we pass or don't pass, that is one thing. A separate issue is if the regionalization study comes back and it shows savings and improvements by regionalizing. That is a separate issue. And that is what drove my decision. And again, I can't speak for the others and I can't speak for Rich. But in my mind, those two issues have been conflated and I do not think they're analogous. Just to kind of add here, and it's much better. There's a lot of talk about Band-Aid. I think going to referendum, talking about it in a way that says lies is permanent. We're not trying to Band-Aid. In my opinion, this is doing surgery to fix problems so that we can do right by the citizens' ocean view. Band-Aid would be essentially to do, yeah, do as you said, do a one-year. We wanna fix this problem so that we have the time and the ability to do right. And if that is regionalizing, and we hope it will be, but we wanna keep the school open. We wanna make sure that the staff and students are doing what they're doing, do right by that. So I don't look at it as a Band-Aid. I look at it as let's do surgery to the program. Let's fix the problem so that we can then decide what's right going forward. And regionalization, ideally, if that's the direction to go, 27, 28, that'd be great. Again, there are multiple districts, multiple towns involved. This could be a two-year, a three-year project. And then if we did it one year, then there would be, we'd have to go back to that forever. What if we did for one year and the, I don't know. It's not, the whole point is to fix, that's the goal and then make. On the second. To perform the surgery and let's say the referendum passes. Then to focus all attention on the regionalization and doing it right physically. Speaking personally, I don't wanna raise taxes, raising taxes on myself. I don't think that's a good answer. But this is an important thing for us to do, in my opinion, so that we can do right about the school, staff and students.
Is this stuff, yeah, stolen? Alisa, I'm trying for East Longport. I agree with everything that you guys are saying right now, except for the fact that the two are separate. They are not separate. If you raise, you know, I know you don't like the word Band-Aid, but if you do the Band-Aid for the next year and then come state effects, these are the two options. These two things will cost us this much. We need to raise the taxes to be able to do either option A or option B. Then I think you would have more support on a forever tax increase. Now, I know it's more work to have to go back and ask for money every year, but you're basically gonna have to do that anyway. If, I just, I just feel like you cannot make one decision without the other. You cannot make a decision on a forever tax for the future without knowing the future of the school. The future of the school depends on the study.
Understood, if you're just repeating what you said before.
No, I, and, but I wanna let you know that I hear you. It's not that I don't hear you and I don't fully disagree with you. But you did say, you know, like you wanna keep the school open forever. But when the study comes out and if regionalization is the option, then we go forward with that. But that's not keeping the school open forever.
Okay. Thank you.
But if it is that, then you ask for the forever tax increase.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, if, if this is a shame, nothing wrong. If you do the referendum passes and we have taxes, then regionalization is what happens. Or they re-figure out the school tax for everybody, then ours could possibly go down to possibly. Were the referendum, it does because there's a total apocalypse out bottom of my, everyone. You take the school budget for everybody and if it's a savings, then it gets divided by all five taxes. That's what we said.
Why don't you leave the place of the case and then why give us back the money that we just?
It's not giving the math assistance code that now we need for next year.
I know what you're saying, you're saying for next year, yes. What I'm saying is, I put money for next year and then it's a iteration between regionalization and now it's all high school or whatever, it becomes a whole. And then they can redo everything.
But it's not, there's no harm.
But no, if you create it now, right, it's such a, this is a.
They've been actually.
You're, you're, you're asking for more than what we need right now.
No, we're trying to.
Right need is for next year.
Correct.
Ask for 20 for next year, figure out if we're gonna stay open or do a free districting. And then ask for the referendum, that's easy, why?
If the study shows that, if there is no cost, they're gonna try and save the school. And now we, now we have already prepared ourselves for the future by doing surgery.
But you know, when you have a bunch of people that are, I'm sure, that will be a whole thing here. I mean, they can worry about, nope. Yeah, but that has to work for our.
Understood, thank you for your comments. Okay. Anything else, anything new, anything for the good of the order? Motion for adjournment? Second, all in favor? All right. No, we also get a court application during the regular meeting at, say, 20, 8:20 PM. The next regular meeting, we also get a court application is Tuesday, December 16th at 6:00 AM. Thank you.